I'm going to call the meeting to order. Rebecca, please call the roll.
Toohill?
Here.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, I do have a couple requests to add one agenda item. We had a request late Friday to add Lindsey Bauer, I think she's here, yes, she is there, regarding the Farm Show at the Fairfield Arts and Convention Center, so I'd like to place her under public forum and appearances, if that's okay with the council. And also, we had an issue or a topic under the administrative report, but we have several people here regarding that, so again, we'd like to put that at the, and it's related to...
305 East Buchanan Avenue.
Thank you, 305 East Buchanan, and so we'll put that at the end of public forum and appearances too, so y'all don't have to wait the whole meeting to get an update on that, if that's okay with council.
No objection.
No objection, okay. So, okay, with that, we will move on to the consent agenda, and approval of the minutes of the January 22, 2024 council meeting, approval of the February 2, 2024 payroll in the amount of $151,007.05, resolution authoring funds transfers, acceptance of the library board minutes, acceptance of the beautification commission minutes, acceptance of the Carnegie Museum board minutes, acceptance of the Public Safety and Transportation Committee minutes, acceptance of Economic Development Committee minutes, approval of liquor license for Verizon Wine Bar, Fairfield Arts and Convention Center, Aranda's Mexican Restaurant, The Hideaway Pub LLC, Dollar Tree number 7142, Hy-Vee Meeting Room, and Walmart Store number 985, approval of ACH payments to our Department of Revenue in the amount of $16,423.54, approval of special claims in the amount of $3,360.30, and approval of total claims in the amount of $860,104.52. We had two claims over $75,000, Wix Construction for Highway 1 in the amount of $241,851.31, and Woodruff Construction for Step 3 of $217,886.30.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Okay, moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Esti. Any discussion?
I did go through the claims and everything seemed in order.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Consent agenda approved unanimously. Okay, under public forum and appearances, Deb Williamson for the Beautification Commission, is she here? Oh, okay. You're here in her place. Okay, if you'll come up and let us know who you are, and tell us who you are from the commission, and...
My name is Mercedes Mancia.
My name is Jenny Ferrimanez. And we are here in honor of Deb, so we're going to do our very best. So today, we want to present Don Halting for the amazing job he has done at 1006 West Grimes. Don?
Yeah, Don, you want to come up and accept that?
Well, thank you.
Good for you.
Appreciate it. Oh, okay.
I think Don's been a champion for redoing houses, and he just finished that one on West Grimes, and it really looks nice. We appreciate what you've done, Don.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. And then our next, can I, are we got to move forward?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Our next item on our agenda, we wanted to talk about the Fairfield Public Restrooms. So just as a reminder, the Beautification Commission's mission is to develop a welcoming environment for both citizens and visitors alike. We encourage the maintenance of public and commercial buildings with special consideration of the downtown area. In 2024, the Beautification Commission's plans to replace the planters and update the landscaping around the restrooms, which will create quality curb appeal and support downtown beautification. Current state, unfortunately, the inside of the Fairfield Public Restrooms on Burlington are in poor condition. They are not fit for public use and certainly do not convey a welcoming environment. There is no working AC, some of the toilets and sinks are broken, the roof contains asbestos, the restrooms are dated and in need of a major update. Our suggestion on next steps, if Weston has not already inspected the public restrooms, we ask that he inspect them. The city has an opportunity to design a public restroom interior that is innovative, original in concept, and excellent in execution, which is the criteria for receiving a Rose Award for Excellence in Design. Obviously, we don't know what is within the budget limit, and we're aware that this will take time, but we really wanted to keep this on a list of priorities. That's as much as I have to say. And I hope I represented Deb as good.
Well, I can say that I share your sentiment. I've been talking about the restrooms for four or five years, and trying to get the squeaky wheel to, you know, see if we can get there, and so I think it does have the attention of everyone here, and we'd like to see some movement on it as well. And so, if you have ideas also how to make it beautiful, and in the Fairfield flavor, I'm open to all ideas, and I think it'd be fun to share some of those.
Okay, definitely. I think we have a meeting later this month, and that would definitely be a topic we'd love to discuss.
Okay, great, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, Don, was there anything that you wanted to say about some of your projects? I was kind of remiss. Maybe you wanted to say something.
I can't.
It's up to you.
Just for a minute.
Yeah.
I'll just tell you, this particular one was, it had a fire in it about five years ago, and gaping holes in the foundation. It was caving in, so it was about 110 years old, and of course, they had to put a new basement underneath of it, and all new systems, wiring and plumbing, and HVAC and drywall, kitchens, bas, everything. And it turned out really well. It's, I will say, it's a bit unique in some ways in that it is, does not meet the minimum size requirements for a home in Fairfield currently, because it was only 660 square feet. But by putting a new basement under it, we were able to finish that and expand it into a home that had over 1,300 square feet. So it's a three-bedroom, two-bath, with a family room and walk-in closet and so forth. Anyway, 110-year-old house, hopefully it lasts another 110.
Great. Thank you again. Next is Darren Hamilton and Car Collectors Unlimited. I don't see Darren here, but he wants use of the square on June 7th, August 2nd, and looks like September 22nd. So there's the cruise nights and their annual car show, so...
He's not going to block off any streets? I don't see a map or anything like that.
Yeah.
Should we wait, and I make movie table this until he comes?
Yeah, the car show, they usually do block off streets. So, was he planning to be here tonight, or do you know?
I just, it was on my desk when I got back from a conference.
Okay. So maybe we can get him here this next meeting. Okay, so there's been a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, great. So that motion was tabled, and we'll get ahold of Darren, see when he can get here too, hopefully the next meeting. Okay, last or next is Lindsey Bauer with her request regarding the Farm Show and blocking off the street there.
Good evening. Thank you so much for adding me last minute to your agenda. I promise I'll be very quick, and I'm not asking for any money. This is the ninth annual Farm Show. We're looking forward to a really successful ninth show, which seems unbelievable to me. And we just block off the street on either side of the building, and it also affects the courthouse parking lot. They're still through in and out of the courthouse parking area, just not on Main Street. We'll have equipment parked there for display from various businesses here in the area. And then, of course, on the Saturday, we'll have families and children around and about with that equipment, kind of like an equipment petting zoo. We are planning to close as per usual on Thursday night, and then it'll be closed all day on Friday while equipment owners are dropping off their things and getting it started, getting it parked and displayed. And then, of course, it'll be closed during the hours of the Farm Show on Saturday. It will be open again by Saturday evening. Of course, we have a show that night, so we're going to want people to be able to park that there. That is all per usual, nothing new.
Okay, great. Council?
I'm moved to approve the request to close off the streets as requested.
Second.
Okay, moved by Esti, second by Flornoy. Any other questions or discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Okay, great. That was unanimously approved. Great, have a great Farm Show.
Thank you.
And again, we're going to move up the 305 East Buchanan Avenue that we were going to talk about in Administrator Department reports. I did request, and Doug brought this to the table, to have it put on the agenda. Are we going to have Weston go through the timeline of what's happened there?
He can, he's available.
Yeah, I was hoping that we could just go through the timeline of what's happened, because that's, this has gone through a legal process, and review by safety, and our Animal Control Board last year, and so let's just get an update of kind of that timeframe and where everything's been.
Morning, or good evening. There's two cases open on this address involving the dogs that are there. One's a nuisance complaint about the noise and the smell. The other one is for failure to license any of the dogs that are there. The original complaint was filed on 10/20/23. We've had about four motions to continue throughout that time. We finally did get a hearing on 1/25/24. The defendants did not show up. Their lawyer did not show up. In 15 minutes before the case, or before the trial, they applied for another continuance. The judge denied that. We went ahead and had a hearing without them there. About a week later, we got notice that there was going to be a sentencing hearing. So I assume that means that we got a guilty verdict on both of them, both cases. So that's where we're at as far as the legal end of it. We're just waiting on the sentencing hearing.
Question real quick. What's the date of the sentencing hearing? Sorry.
The 22nd of this month. So, this, I don't know how it's going to play out with the judge. I don't know what he's going to come up with as a punishment for them as far as the nuisance and stuff. When I was there, the last time, I counted 17 dogs on the property. The neighbors have said there's up to 32 dogs, 31 dogs at one time on the property. So I don't know how we're going to verify how many dogs need to be licensed, but that's going to be a pretty hefty fine for them just for that.
And it's only dogs, correct? They have no cats or other animals, or do we know?
What we've been told is somewhere around 20 dogs, 10 cats, and two totals, and three people in house.
Okay.
We've also had some complications. The citation that Weston can issue, very wide open, I'm just going to refer to it as a vague ordinance. The Animal Control Review Board did not want to give us a specific number to change our ordinance. So we had to prove that it was either offensive to smell, offensive to neighbors by noise, offensive to persons by sight. And what we did is we had eight witnesses testify that it stinks. They don't go outside in the summer because they are offended by it. Dogs get loose daily and cause problems knocking over their garbage cans and things like that. And that people that come to visit them, they get out of their car out at the curb, and they can already tell what's going on. The other complicator is that the owners of the dogs and the property that was cited, they've taken the position, even though there are testimony that they see as many as 30 dogs there, that they only know who two of the dogs belong to. You know, that's insulting to your intelligence, but we don't have any way of dealing with that, except, all right, well, you're allowing to occur then 20, 30 more dogs in your property without knowing whose they are or how they got there. You know, if we have to do that kind of specious citation, that's what we're left with, and it's almost that bad as far as explaining to the judge, we know who are in control of those dogs, but since none of them are licensed, and nobody's owning, or taking ownership except for two dogs, we still want a conviction for the rest of the dogs unlicensed. We want a conviction for the nuisance that's created by 18, or 20, or 28 dogs that nobody's claiming. And that's, that's a bad side effect of the way our ordinance is right now, but I don't have a say with the Animal Control Review Board, except what we have right now makes it hard to try.
And it's, it's very inconvenient for the people that are affected by this. The neighbors are good neighbors. They don't want to cause trouble. They don't want to have bad feelings. They don't want to be that bad neighbor. They don't want to take the time off of work to come in, to come to a trial. And the way our ordinance is written, with it being so subjective, that's what we have to have, and they have to speak up like that. It's a little bit unfair to them also. They're looking at diminished property values. We even heard them say that they were, they would like, they would move away if they could, but they're afraid they can't sell their house with the way the property is right now.
And for the new council's information, just so you know, last year's safety committee met about this also, about whether we should limit the number of animals you can have in a house, and they were unwilling to do it because of the number, I mean, and the Animal Review Board, as John said. You know, I think some of the issues are, for example, I know one of the people on the Animal Review Board fosters cats, so she may have multiple cats for a period of time, which may be over that limit, if you choose a limit. So, you know, and other people could maybe handle four or five dogs or cats and be just fine. So anyway, that's a little bit history on the committee, committee work and the Animal Control Board. So, Doug, go ahead.
Two questions then. Does the Animal Control Board have to make a recommendation on the number, or can we do it without their approval?
I think you can do it without their approval, but I think they, out of courtesy, they went to the Animal Review Board to get their opinion.
And then the second question I had was, at what point do the animals are being considered maltreated and can be seized by the government or...
So far, the reports I've had and the dogs I've seen, they don't seem to be emaciated or have anything from a distance that I can tell is wrong with them. So it's a real sticky spot whether or not they're being abused. I believe that they, they love their dogs and they have affection for them. I think that they're just, they don't understand what they're doing to the rest of the neighborhood. I mean, their yard is decimated. There's not a blade of grass in it anywhere. And I think they're a little delusional as far as not being able to smell what's going on there. I don't know if it's because they live there and that they just aren't used to the smell, and they don't think that it smells that bad. So...
Seems like it would be really difficult to craft an ordinance to really kind of capture every, I mean, like if you have to break it down by species, you know, like it just seems like that. Are there other cities that have ordinances that were...
I believe a lot of cities have a maximum...
A lot of cities number four or five, and then they have ordinance descriptions for the other things, like how many, how many animals, before you're a kennel, do you need a kennel license? How many dogs can you have, or how many animals, and be a breeder and buy a breeder's license? Those things, we make reference to in our ordinance, but we don't have specific numbers there either. So it's one of those things, if we, if we address one numerical question, we might as well get all of them. Other towns have it, Kiyosaku, Birmingham, Stockport, Packwood, they all have specific numbers in their ordinances. But I'm not opposed to the opinion of the Control Review Board as far as their input. They perform a service as far as situations that you don't want to be having animal appeal hearings take up your council nights because they can, and they've served that function over the years. But it's one of those situations where I don't really think they'd be terribly offended if council did step in and have an opinion that was different than theirs on that one issue. Because I think this case, by the time we're done with it, there are going to be a lot more citations if things just keep on going like they are down there.
You could definitely use your Board of Appeals for exceptions to those rules, and it could be on a yearly or bi-yearly basis with those people, and that would give the neighbors a voice also, by using the Board of Appeals, in my opinion.
Have we had this issue before, in years before?
No.
Okay. So, you know, to me, you've got a couple strategies. If you want to take it up again in Safety Committee, or if you want to wait till after February 22nd to see what the ruling is, see if that fixes it.
It's still in the Safety Committee. It hasn't come out yet, so they can still act on it if they want to.
Okay. So, what's your thoughts?
Very true, Doug.
Terry, were you going to say something?
Is this the only...
She's going to say we could certainly make exceptions for a Faustian instance, I would think, that they could apply for, you know, an exception.
Yeah.
Is this the only grounds that action could be taken on? I mean, is there anything under, like just public nuisance, or in general?
Well, what about the Public Health Department? Can they get involved?
No, we, no. Public, we've talked to Public Health. They can't because it's not a communicable disease. One thing we looked at is runoff, but you've got to have rain to do that, and wasn't there some other issue related to that, Melanie, or...
Proving where it came from.
Proving where it came from. So, you know, it becomes challenging. So...
Yeah. Before we filed in October, we had a petition circulated that gathered, I believe, 32 signatures for many of the neighbors about, you know, a request that we please do something about this. And then the attorney for the group was going to come back with some kind of a suggestion that might resolve it. My impression is that the attorney was boarding her animals there. That tends to complicate things, so she never did come back with a proposal.
It seems reasonable to me that there should be some limit, you know, with, with cutouts obviously for breeders and the like. I think I would make a motion that we send it back to the Public Safety and Transportation Committee.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Roe, second by Flornoy to move it to Safety Committee. Any more discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Roe?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay, so that was moved unanimously to move it back to the Safety Committee, and we look at it, and look at some other ordinances.
The intent of the motion is to have them put a limit on the number of animals?
Yeah, with reasonable cutouts for breeders and kennels and so on.
Okay. Okay. So we'll move on to resolution action items and ordinances. The first action item, consideration toward a five-year engineering services for the municipal airport. This was with CMT. Bob, you want to come up and speak to this, and then people can ask questions if they have?
Sure. So every five years, the FAA requires the city to take applications for engineering firms for the airport. So we're doing this again, and the Airport Board reviewed, we had one applicant, and they, they voted to have CMT. So if there's any questions, please ask. That's our previous firm that we've had.
And we've, that's who we've used, yeah.
Yeah, we've had them for numerous years now.
Bob, is that Crawford, Murphy, Tilly?
Yeah, Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly.
If no questions, is there a move to approve?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Toohill to approve this agreement. Any more questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, great. Unanimously approved. Next action item, consideration of the 2024 IRS mileage rate of 67 cents per mile.
I make the motion that we adopt the IRS mileage rate of 67 cents per mile for 2024.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Caness. Any discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Thank you. That was a pass unanimously to adopt the 67 cents per mile. Action item, consideration of attendance to the Growing Sustainable Communities Conference in Dubuque. I think, Doug, you want to request this?
Yeah, this is a conference that we'd like to send a sustainability coordinator to, and I would like to go, and we've asked the city administrator to attend as well. It's scheduled for April 23, 24, and the early registration deadline is, I think, the 15th of February, so if we were to prove it tonight, we could meet that deadline. And I estimate probably about $500 per person would be the top expense.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the... I'll make the motion to approve the exception.
Okay?
Okay, second.
Flornoy moves, and we got a second by Mr. Gandy, any other questions?
So, total of three people attending?
Up to three, yes.
Up to three?
If, if the city administrator can make it.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, not, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Thank you, that was approved unanimously, next action item, consideration of attendance to the development, twenty-four economic development conference in Cedar Rapids, I believe this is a request from Mr. Paul Gandy.
Yes, Mayor, the Iowa Utility Association sponsors yearly a economic development conference, this year's conference will be in Cedar Rapids in May, and based upon their preliminary agenda, and the speakers who have committed, it would seem to be a very useful conference for at least the members of the economic development committee to attend, and whoever else on council or administration would be interested in as well, just to give a preview for the public, committed to attend this conference is Debbie Durham, who many of you know as the executive director of the Iowa Economic Development Association, also Beth Townsend, who some of you know as the executive director of the Iowa Workforce Development, and also we expect at lunch, at the luncheon meeting, either the governor or lieutenant governor to speak, plus there's a renowned keynote speaker, professor, I believe, at Creighton University, Creighton University, so it promises, based on communications we see from the organizer of the conference, to be a conference from which we'll get many ideas, I think, that we can bring back to, for the betterment of our city, so I'd like to propose that the city allocate the money necessary for both the economic member, members of the economic development committee, which are three, and any other council member who may also be interested, as well as our administration, I mean, speaking of our city administrator and our mayor, the cost per member, or per applicant is ninety dollars, hotel rooms are reserved at about a hundred and sixty-five dollars plus tax in Cedar Rapids, so depending on the number of people who would want to attend, at least three, I think four, at least four council members I'm aware of, the cost would be somewhere between, you think ninety dollars plus a hundred and seventy-five dollars, plus let's say fifty dollars per food, ninety and seventy-five, that's about two hundred and fifty dollars, so I'd like to ask the council, my motion is to allow the, allow the, the council to grant or to approve that its members, as many other council members choose to, and administrations, city administrator and, or the mayor, be, be paid for by the, by the city to attend this particular conference.
I have a second.
Okay, moved by Gandy, second by Kness, any other questions? Not, please call a roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yeah.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Thank you, that was unanimously approved, for approximately two hundred and fifty dollars for each person to go to the economic development committee, or conference in Cedar Rapids, next action item, Melly's going to talk about this, consideration of the supplemental agreement number two, construction phase services replacement for Crow Creek.
Okay, so this is an agreement, or an amendment to the original agreement with Calhoun Burns and Associates, they are the design team that did, the design for Crow Creek Bridge, is an amendment because they don't, they don't put this together until we're ready to go to bid, so that we have the current billing rates and everything, depending on when the project does go out for bid, what they are proposing is a not-to-exceed amount of a hundred and eighty thousand, we are expecting construction to start very soon, within the month to forty-five days, and then it is a hundred and five working days, which is not equal to calendar days, it's how many days that they have weather and utilities suitable to work, so that would be putting the project wrapping up, I don't want to say late fall, but around the first mid, mid, early to mid-October, the goal is to get that done before harvest, they have, I spoke with Mike VanderWurt, and they're expecting around a thousand hours, they will have one person mainly out on site, but on the days such as when they pour the concrete slab for the deck, they'll have multiple people out there doing tests, checking elevations, and doing that quality control during construction, so, this is within what we had budgeted, and we would recommend approval.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Esti?
Second.
Second by Tohill, any questions? Seeing none, please call a roll. Esti?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Great, unanimously approved, next item is consideration of providing for fiscal year financial support of Area 15 Regional Planning Commission in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars and forty-eight cents, hang on here, so, this has to do with the different, our area, Jefferson, Keokuk, Mahaska, Van Buren, Wapaloa, including Fairfield, Tamwa and Oskaloosa, and this has a lot to do with our economic development and how Area 15 helps us write grants and, and such, and so this is a fifty-three cent per capita for us to participate in that, I think it's a...
They also help us manage grants, right?
Pardon me?
They also help us manage grants, don't they?
Yes, yep, so this is, you know, we've been doing this for, I don't know how long, but a long time.
I'll make the motion that we provide the four thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and forty-eight cents to the RPC.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy, any other questions? Seeing none, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Thank you, that was approved unanimously, and then we go on to the next resolution, consideration of providing for fiscal twenty-three, that must not be right.
Oops, sorry.
That should be twenty-five, financial support of regional planning affiliation, RPA fifteen in the amount of two thousand three seventy-nine, this is for our DOT funding that comes through regional planning, and this is our match, our, our portion of that, and again, those same counties and cities are involved in this, so.
I'll make the motion to provide financial support to the RPA fifteen in the amount of twenty-three hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Second.
Okay, moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy, any other questions? Seeing none, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Thank you, approved unanimously, and the last resolution is consideration of agreement with the Fairfield Economic Development Association, Mr. Gandy, you want?
Thank you, Mayor.
You want to talk about that?
Yes, the, this, I, I think we may combine the economic development committee report into this resolution, or part of it in any case, so the economic development committee met last on February seventh, and we had a number of members of the community present, including the executive director of the Fairfield Economic Development Association, also known as Grow Fairfield, and also the executive director of the Fairfield Convention and Visitors Bureau, our, our mayor, city administrator and the members of the committee, we, and this had been, I think, a desire of the council for some time, to have, put, to memorialize, put in writing our, our relationship, longstanding and successful relationship with the Fairfield Economic Development Association, and so this task was referred, a draft of the agreement, proposed agreement was prepared by the city administrator, and referred to our committee for some refinement, we met last Wednesday, and with the input of, of the people I mentioned, including our city attorney, we came to, I think, what is an agreement that represents the best interest of the city and we believe is fair for FIDA, so what we have attached to the resolution is the proposed resolution itself and the agreement, the, and I'm going to ask Jason if you can bring them up for a moment, and move, scroll down to the resolution, there are a couple of things in the resolution that are different from what we spoke, agreed to, and I just want to make, these are changes, corrections, I would say, to the language of the resolution, I would scroll down, if you would, to section two, section two, it states funding and consideration of the services provided by FIDA, the city of Fairfield agree to help grow Fairfield, grow Fairfield FIDA from the city's UDAG lost fund, actually, UDAG stands for, what does it stand for? Anyway, UDAG is one source of funding, lost, local option sales tax is another source of funding, so rather than a parentheses with lost fund within it, it should be UDAG comma lost fund as a potential source of funding, or general fund, in the amount of twenty-six thousand dollars, the other thing that we agreed upon, agreed on at the meeting is that the, the amount of twenty-six thousand dollars is to be used in addition to the items listed there, which includes support of ongoing annual expenses of Grow Fairfield slash FIDA, including salaries, et cetera, the language we, we also agreed to add was including administrative partnership and membership cost, membership, or, I'm sorry, administrative partnership and membership cost, so it should read, including administrative partnership and membership cost?
Is that the bottom paragraph?
I'm still, yeah, I'm still in section two.
Fourth line.
Fourth line, so, and, and we have, and the committee members are present, you can correct me if I'm wrong, my recollection is that we included that language, so it should be, should read, including administrative partnership and membership fees, salaries, comma, office expenses, marketing, online tools for general operations, business development, and network opportunities for a period effective immediately to July 30, 2025.
So this doesn't show the membership fees, that's one of my questions.
Right, right, right.
And why it didn't show that?
Right, right, so that should be added, that was just a, an oversight in terms of the document that's attached to the...
Because I know the billing invoice shows membership.
Yes.
This didn't show it.
Yes, yes, so, there's a, there's one other change, and I'm going to propose a friendly amendment, so make, so that this proposed resolution comports with what our agreement was, if I, Jason, you can scroll to page two, so, this is section four, section four reads, term and termination of this contract shall be in effect immediately, which through July 30th, 2025, at the end of the term, right, at the end of the term, the contract shall automatically renew itself for, annually for a period of five fiscal years, unless either party gives the other written notice of desire to terminate or change any provision within not less than ninety days before the end of the annual term.
So you want to edit that again?
Yes.
Take out the one in parentheses?
Yes.
Should that be June 30th, or is it on July 30th?
Yeah, I think you, Ms. Kness, a member of the committee, mentioned that should be through July, I'm sorry, June 30th, 2025, so, the actual language should be term and termination of this contract shall be in effect immediately, immediately through June 30th, 2025, at the end of the term, the contract shall, shall automatically renew itself automatically for a period of five fiscal years, unless either party gives the other written notice of desire to terminate or change any provision, not less than within ninety days before the end of the annual term, before the end of the term, is that correct, before the end of the term, so, I hope that makes some sense, but there's, we just, we just, that's what we intended, and I think that's what we agreed to at the meeting, so, I'd like to make a friendly amendment that we, that we change the language of this proposed, proposal, resolution, to, to be consistent with what my corrections were, or are.
Well, we need a motion to, I want you to just make the motion to approve this with your additional language.
Okay, all right.
Because we don't have it, do we? Do we have a motion?
No, no, not yet.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, then I would move to approve this proposed resolution with my new language, additional language.
I would second.
Okay, moved by Gandy, second by Kness.
Question, does everybody have the one-page financial agreement as an attachment to the resolution?
Yeah.
That got lost in the shuffle for a little bit, but...
Yeah, yeah, so right now, we're just working on the resolution.
Then we're complete, okay.
Yep.
And I could just refresh my memory, the reason why we have those alternate funding choices is because UDAG's not going to exist right after this year.
Correct. And that gives us a little more leeway, apparently in the past, they also sometimes funded out of lost.
Okay.
So we, they wanted that flexibility.
We won't need to, like, designate where it's coming from, if we just have, like, in the alternative lost or general funds, and that doesn't matter if we...
I think, yeah, I think the language we're saying, or, sufficient, I think.
It's being paid out of UDAG fund now.
Yeah, correct.
I don't think, and I don't think UDAG goes away at the end of this year, does it, we still have enough in it to...
I think, yeah, I think we have another year yet, at least.
I meant, oh, I guess, I meant at the end of this one-year term, and then it's just going to automatically renew, so.
So, for the benefit of the public, what does UDAG stand for?
Urban Development.
Urban Development.
Something grant.
Action Grant.
Action Grant.
Okay, thank you.
I was blanking out, too.
At my benefit, too, thank you.
I thought there was a provision in here for FIDA to give an annual report to us.
Yes, that's in the agreement, so this is the resolution.
Okay.
And if the resolution is that we accept, I believe the resolution accepts the agreement.
It's in here?
Yes, it's in the agreement, not here, but in, it's in the agreement.
It's the last sentence of the one-pager.
Which will, will, which once we, if, if there is, if this resolution's approved, we'll, we'll review the agreement.
So there is a motion and a second to approve this with the amended language, any other questions, not, please call a roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
And so, the second part of this process is to actually approve that the city entered into the agreement, the financial agreement with FIDA, and that's going to be page one of the attachment, Jason, you'll scroll probably up.
It's the same document.
Same document, yes.
Just the first page.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's the one-page, as, as our city attorney referred, that is referred to, that's our one-page agreement, and just to scroll down to the bottom, Doug, to point out for you that the fund, just to read the last sentence, the funds will be issued, the twenty-six thousand, in two equal installments upon billing by Grow Fairfield FIDA in July and January, and upon receipt of annual progress reports, and upon receipt of annual progress reports, and support of all accountability procedures required of and by the city of Fairfield, so, yeah, let's move up to the front, I think that this agreement is substantially what we, it is what we agreed to accept, the same correction would be regarding to the funding, if you'll scroll down, I think the third paragraph?
I think that's accurate, Mayor.
Does it say how the, what their funding's coming from?
Yeah, it says UDAG lost fund or general.
Good, it's changed, all right, good, so...
Do you need the administrative membership and partnership?
Yes, yes, we do, so, the sentence, which is the same, okay, so, long sentence, so, fourth line of that paragraph, that starts off Grow Fairfield, and to be, twenty-six thousand dollars to be used in support of ongoing annual expenses of Grow Fairfield slash FIDA to include administrative partnership and membership expenses, comma, salaries, office expenses, et cetera, just like the resolution, so we're adding that phrase.
Just get us a copy at the next meeting, just send us a copy at the next meeting.
A copy of this?
The revised version.
Oh, yeah, 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 this is something, I mean, in, in looking at it this afternoon, we saw there was some...
It's a little rough.
Yeah, yeah, but, but I think the changes are small enough that I think it's, at least to me, it's clear, so, but if there are any questions, a council objection, that's fine, but I think that's, we, we want to get something, I think this is something that makes sense for the, as they say, for the city, it's clear to FIDA, and we can move forward from here.
So I have a question, we have the resolution on the agenda, not technically this agreement? Are we okay, John, or we need to bring this back?
We're okay, yeah, the resolution's indicating we approved the agreement.
Okay, I just want to be sure about that.
It's almost verbatim.
Right, okay.
So I, I make a motion to approve the agreement as I modify this evening.
Okay. Moved by Gandy, second... Moved by Gandy, second by Kness. Any further questions? Not, please call the roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Tuho?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, under the mayor's report, I've got several things. Uh, in fact, there's a couple that are not listed here that I'm gonna start out with. Um, Paul and Doug Reiner and I went to a meeting, I think it was last Monday or Tuesday night, outside her house related to a company called Apex. And this is just an FYI, Apex is looking to put a wind farm up in Jefferson, Keokuk, and Washington Counties. So they are engaging with another company, uh, with farmers to, um, get leases. And so it was an informational meeting primarily for landowners, but we went as city representatives. It was quite interesting. They, their kind of first goal was to get 10,000 acres under contract. They're about two-thirds of the way there, and, um, this is a multi-year project, you know, probably won't see construction for, I think they said, three to four years.
That's right, yeah.
Um...
It was interesting, if I can add?
Yeah, I was gonna say, add, uh, you know, some of the takeaways that, that you have. One of the things they have is they're doing quarterly grants of 5,000 to nonprofits, so that's kind of a nice thing.
And I think our Jefferson County Ambulance Service, or the Jefferson County Ambulance Service has participated in one of those, a couple of those grants.
Is that, uh, information available on their website, or how do you access it?
I think they said it was available.
Oh, yeah, and I can get you some...
Any nonprofit can apply?
Yeah, yeah.
The interesting thing, to me, that came away, they, they, you know, I think both the conferences we've spoken about this evening are sponsored by utility companies. But here's the thing, the interesting thing about utility companies, they asked, uh, Apex gave the presentation, he said, "Do you know," the question was, "Do you know how much of Iowa's energy is provided by wind?" And they said, if they're right, they said, the number was 62%.
62%?
62%.
That's what they said, that's what they said. So that's pretty surprising to me.
Wind, cause we're bringing in power from other, across state lines, and we're getting windmills from other states supplying the energy, maybe.
But 62% is a pretty, I mean...
It's not, we don't have that much in Iowa, though.
I think they'd like to.
It's pretty much presence in northern Iowa.
Yeah.
And western Iowa.
Yeah.
A lot in western Iowa.
That much?
Yeah.
So one of the other things they said that they are projecting that it'll be a 400-megawatt project, megawatt project, they estimate somewhere between 66 and 100 turbines. So, um... You know, this is just high level, just wanted to kind of give you an FYI that this is happening. Um, Doug and I both have cards for contacts there. Um, oh, Melanie, you wanna add something? Yes.
Um, so Doug and I, uh, met with the county regarding the zoning that's going to, uh, be occurring with this issue. Um, so although it's not, um, proposed for directly adjacent to the city limits, we just wanna make sure that we have that, um, we, we already have a tall structure ordinance in place for protecting the airspace around, uh, the airport. Um, so we'll make sure that that's, um, I don't know, tight and, and, um, and all good so that we, uh, move forward properly with that. Um, and then we will be starting to talk with planning, the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, they will probably have a meeting on March 4th about some, modifying some language to our code, uh, regarding, um, um, the area just outside the city limits. So we currently, um, anything within two miles of the city, the county allows us, or we have a subdivision ordinance, uh, where we, where we work with the county. And so, um, again, we, we hope to work with the county on, um, that's an area within a mile or maybe even two miles, we're still working with the county on this. Um, but probably a mile, that, um, the city and the county will kind of have joint jurisdiction over that. Still a lot to figure out, I think, um, uh, but just letting you know that that is on planning and zoning's radar.
Great.
Um, to keep that in mind. Again, not directly adjacent to the city, but just making sure that we're keeping an eye on it.
Great, awesome. I think the last thing I'll say, and again, it's a while out for construction, it's multi-years, but certainly they will be using local contractors like electricians or concrete people or that kind of thing. So, um, you know, people who might be interested in being a subcontractor should, uh, you know, get on their list, so to speak. But, um, okay, so that's all I have about that. Um, last year, we talked about Evergreen Cemetery, and I had asked someone of their representatives to come, and they weren't quite ready. So what's transpired in this last year, and, and, you know, we'll talk about it in budget, no doubt, about the cemetery. But, um, in the last year, one thing that the Cemetery Association is trying to do, Evergreen, is to become self-sufficient. So they, they have created a million-dollar campaign for an endowment fund. And since they kicked that off, and I'm not sure when that was, maybe sometime this fall, they have raised at least a couple hundred thousand somewhere in that neighborhood. Um, so that's a good thing. Uh, the city doesn't wanna have to take over the cemetery. So, um, I, I just encourage people, if you have family out there, if you would consider donating to that endowment fund so that, uh, you know, cause they're taking care of mom and dad and grandma and grandpa every year. And, um, it's a nice way to participate in that. So that's just an FYI. Um, the intersection concern, a safety issue, um... Melanie got a, or I got an email, hang on here. This is, yeah, this was a email to Melanie from a citizen about the corner of Maine... Can I put it on here? Maine and Grimes. Yeah. And, um, in the email, uh, Melanie had thought maybe we should replace the yield sign with stop signs. So I'd like to have the council move this to Safety Committee and take a relook at that.
What's the exact concern, do you know?
Um, people just blowing through the yield sign.
Oh, I see.
And there have been some bad accidents there, apparently.
Make the motion, move that to Safety.
I'd second that.
Okay. Moved by, uh, Flornoy, second by Esti. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, great. Move that to Safety. Thank you.
Do you wanna speak to that?
Um, also, this is an FYI. Uh, I met, well, two weeks ago with, um, FIDA Director Ed Malloy and Julie Albert, the assistant, as well as Terry Baker, CVB, and Mendy McAdams, about a potential downtown task force and downtown revitalization. You know, it was just a, it was a, kind of to start the conversation. And, um, so we're looking at some names for a task force. Um, the Main Street program came up, uh, through that, and that's a whole nother program through the state. Uh, there were a couple things that were brought up, um, that I'd like to refer to Property Committee, or at least this one is, and that's a sign ordinance review. Um, for have the Property Committee look at that and say, you know, what things need to be updated on that? And if in fact there is a task force, you know, they'll probably look at things, too, and there might be more after that, but at least we could get started. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to refer that to Property Committee for a review.
Business signs?
Pardon me?
Business signs?
Yeah.
Like the blade signage?
Blade signs, you know, is that a requirement? I don't know that we have that requirement in the, in the sign ordinance. So, you know, there are things that need to be updated, types of signs, you know, cause technology has changed.
Lit signs, unlit signs.
You know, and, um, yeah. So you open to that, to move that to property?
Sure.
Can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Right. Moved by Tuho, uh, second by Gandy. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great. Last thing was, um, I know in our sign ordinance, it does talk about, you know, when you, when your business is done, you should take down your sign. But there are about six signs, I went around the immediate square, that are still up there and have been up there for years. And it was suggested that maybe if the council were open, we could, uh, ask, use city resources from our street crew to possibly take those down. So, um, I don't know if you're open to that, you wanna talk about it when you talk about the sign ordinance.
Do they have time to do that?
It's a good question.
It's really the business owner's responsibility.
It is. But when the business is no longer here, it's hard to, for them to take it down.
Wouldn't it be the building owner's responsibility, then?
Well, that would be next.
Right.
So...
So we could have, we can meet and talk about it and refer it back to the council.
So the thing is, does a, you know, a business owner may not have a bucket truck and everything to get up there and where we might.
There's one parked on the square, on the alley there for a month now.
I don't know whose that belongs to.
People complaining to me about it.
So, um, I'm just throwing that out as an idea.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
If you wanna refer it to committee.
I think it'd be, Property Committee could certainly handle it.
Safety.
Economic Development. But, yeah, it's...
Signs are distracting.
It's worthy of discussion, I think.
Okay.
So who's, if, if you're recommending referral to Property Committee, I'm, I move that it be referred to Property Committee.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved to second, I had to move that to Property Committee.
It's us.
Any questions?
Got it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great, thanks. So we got that one moved. Okay. Um, brush pile. I'm gonna skip over EMA on my list here and come back to that. Uh, the brush pile update, and, uh, Doug, if I don't hit all the points, um, chime right in. Um, as many people know, the brush pile gate is closed right now because we have, we're up to here. And we have not been able to get a chipper in there, cause it's too wet, too, too damp, too soft. So, um, it's planning right now to open March 4th. There were some down trees in the right-of-ways, and the city's planning to pick those up, um, this week.
Were we doing a general brush pickup, or just?
No.
City-owned trees?
Yep.
Cause people are putting stuff out on the curb.
Right. So there will be the regular brush pile pickup in May. So if you've got brush, wait till March and, and then put it out there. Um...
Wait till May.
Well, in March, if we open it back up.
Right. But for the pickup.
But for the pickup, you have to wait till May. If you wanna haul it yourself, wait till March. If you wanna put it on the curb, you wait till May. And I just wanna say, it's called brush pile. It is not tree trunks that have four-to-five-inch diameter trunks. There is one out there right now that's probably, I don't even know, 10, 12 feet long, diameter of, I don't even know, four or five feet. I don't think anybody could have moved that but a contractor. And so, that's, the brush pile is for brush. It is for our citizens, not for contractors. I really like whoever put it there to go get it and put it somewhere else, because it's not even inside the gate. Um... And I think that's something, again, that Ways and Means will probably take up, looking at cost for contractors, a fine, we don't know.
Problem something like that, it can't even be chipped, can it? It's too big.
No, they can't, you know, they can't, no. You can't get it in a chipper. It's huge. So I would encourage you to go out and look at it.
It can be burned. Uh, Joe Hurd is looking at the possibility of segmenting off a part of the land that's the north fingers out of Walton Lake.
Correct.
Right now, the gun club's not happy about that suggestion, and I haven't had John Doll in for coffee yet. But I think that will happen, uh, over the next month or so, with the idea that this spring we can get a DNR permit to have a big burn and then be done with some for a while. So that four-foot circumference trunk that I know you're talking about is one of the things that's in Joe's mind.
Right.
And I think burning, uh, and controlled burns with a DNR permit, we've got that land out there that's perfectly situated to do it and not be 300 feet away from occupied residences on the north side of the road. Uh, but, uh, it's a little awkward, and it's not been, uh, really fleshed out yet, so...
Yeah. So more to come on that.
Mayor, may I ask, what are the brush pickup days? Cause I know we talked about adding a third one when we closed the...
We'll get back to you.
Okay.
The May one will be May, it'll start May 6th.
Okay.
Okay.
It's a Monday.
May 6th, great.
Go for a week?
Go till they're done.
Till they're done, okay.
So, alrighty. Uh, the last thing on the proposed emergency management budget, which we're gonna be meeting on next week, I believe, um... It's this week? Okay.
15th.
So you have the budget attached, um... And so the high, the high note here is, oh, oh, I wanna note some other things because we are amending the budget for this year, and you will see this here in the, uh, 2024 column, is the hazard mitigation plan is getting started, should be done by July. That was in this year's budget. We need that, um, for FIDA, or excuse me, FEMA, um, emergency grants. Um, the automated siren will be installed this spring, should be, we hope it's done and up by April 30th. And by the way, Grant, or Brett wrote a grant through the Greater Joseph County Foundation, got some money for that. You know, last year, we thought the city would have to put in some money for that. We don't have to, because he wrote a grant and got that money. And then, uh, the commission, okay, to vehicle purchase this year, so we're amending the budget. That will come out of reserves. But for next year, um, we don't have a change to the levy at this point. Um, because some of the things that are coming up on this coming year's budget include, um, a drone program. That was one of the big things, the main big thing. And so our total revenues are $165,076. That includes a FEMA grant of $23,000, which is not guaranteed, okay? So that's not guaranteed. So if you take that out, you have total revenues of $142,076. And our expenses are $158,293. So if we get the grant of $23,000, we'll be about, not quite 6,800.
That's the federal reimbursement line? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
The grant?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's also, well, let me say, and then if we don't get the grant, we'll be using a little over 16,000 of reserves. So one of the questions that came up last year was, could we levy for more than our expenses? And technically, we're not, in the sense that, that, that grant is not guaranteed from FEMA. They can take it away at any time. And we did talk to, or Brett talked to John Parker at, uh, Department of Management, and he said, "The way we're doing the budget is okay."
Just, can I make a point?
Yep.
So you use the word levy, but you're not really, you're not, uh, levying for anything, you're doing the per capita?
We're doing the $2 per capita, and it's still a 7.1 cent levy this year. So we're levying the same total dollars in here. Yes, that's up in...
And so?
County contribution. So on the revenue details, under county contribution, you see $83,731.
$89,000.
Oh, okay, yeah, my glasses aren't that good.
That's not cash, that's a, that's a levy?
That's, that's $74,000, about $74,731 of levy, plus the $2 per capita from the county.
Which is another $15,000, roughly.
And then when you go down to city, that's all the city's $2 per capita.
Okay, that clarifies a lot, because it doesn't say levy on there, so...
Yeah, it's a little confusing.
Hmm?
It's a little confusing.
Very confusing.
Right?
I thought that was a cash contribution from the county.
Mm-mm.
But it's a, it's a seven-cent levy?
Yeah.
Plus a $2 per capita?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Thanks, Brett. I just said, "Thank you."
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay, if not, let's, let's make, let me double-check my list, I think that's everything. And, um, we'll go to the city attorney report.
Okay. There are three things on the agenda that have to do with, uh, how we're dealing with some of our nuisances. And Weston, you wanna... And Weston, you wanna be part of this?
Yeah.
Um, the first thing on the list is eight oh two and a half North Eighth Street. That, excuse me, is a trailer house that has been built over with a stick-built house. Uh, and the trailer house, um, caused a state fire marshal to refer to it as the toaster oven project. Uh, essentially having a metal, uh, facility inside a stick-built facility is a tough one for the fire department to figure out if they show up and it stays that way. So we were told that can't stay that way. Uh, Weston, prior to Weston Scott communicated with the owner at this place, a guy named Ralph Hearn. Uh, and basically, Mr. Hearn lawyered up. He had a lawyer from Otomo that communicated with us repeatedly. And we felt we had an agreement that the, um, construction that was going on would be altered and done according to a plan that would satisfy the fire marshal and also our inspector. Uh, it hasn't though, has it Weston?
No, uh, Mr. Hearn has decided to use his own schedule as to what he's doing. Um, one of our main, main sticks was to get the trailer out of there before any siding was put on or any sheeting or anything like that. He continued to sheet the house and build onto the backside and do all kinds of other stuff before meeting those requirements. Uh, there's some other safety concerns that were brought up by an inspection done by a third party, about the quality of the work, um, and some of the techniques being used in the property. So we've asked, asked him to allow for another inspection and to come up with a timeline since this is going on in like five years now for the build. And he's not replied to that, has chose not to want to participate in that.
He's had an assistance of the attorney from Otomo for the last couple of years. There was a plan that was, what, ten pages long? What he was going to do to remedy the problems, uh, and he's just not on plan. He's doing whatever he feels like.
He was also denied by the Board of Adjustments because he has several zoning issues with his property. Part of that plan was to do things to remedy those zoning issues. Couple of them he is working on, but one of them is a front setback and he refuses to budge on that. Continues to make the improvements to the front of the house instead of taking it down. It's something also that we've noticed from the outside. Uh, the property also has considerable amount of trash around it most of the time. Camper sitting in the front yard, um, numerous other violations also to go along with it. Besides just having tarps all over and for five years in the neighborhood.
I'm looking at pictures, are there footings even poured?
He had like twenty-four inch footings originally.
Around the outside?
Around the outside of it.
And it's like a bridge over the.
Yeah. So we did require that, there was a lot of back and forth on that. We did come up with a plan for the footings to go all the way around the, the property, around the house and the garage. Um, at the required depth and where, and, um, he completed about three quarters of it. He doesn't wanna go around the garage now. But we don't want the, the garage is attached and it's heated from time to time. We don't want it moving at a different rate than we do the house. Even though Mr. Hearn says he doesn't plan on putting any gas lines in between them or anything like that, somebody in the future might. And we don't want that possibility to happen while we have the chance to, to satisfy that.
Do, do you need action from the council on this?
Um, what we really need is, we, we need the council to decide whether we're gonna move forward, what we want to do with Mr. Hearn. Um, I feel like I've exhausted everything I can from our office. And it's really a council's decision on what you wanna do moving forward, whether we wanna take legal action against him or we're just gonna let him build the way he is or whatever you wanna do.
What, what are our choices?
You could, you could offer him an opportunity to come and talk with you and maybe have his attorney show up and explain what they think they're doing because it doesn't look like the plans they gave us. If we, uh, take him back into court, this thing's basically been extended out with the idea that he's gonna do the plan. Uh, but our remedy, if he doesn't do the plan, is to take him back to court. Uh, unless the council doesn't wanna go any further with it and thinks it looks like a nice place. We're not satisfied that it's safe or nice. Uh, so, but that's just Weston and me and. Everybody knows we're hardball.
Well, council, what do you want to do?
Um, one thing before that, um, Mr. Hearn, I believe, has left the country also and has went to China, from what I understand. And I don't know if that's, we don't know how long that's gonna be, months, is what we've been led to believe. What's that?
When did he go?
Uh.
No, that was in India, wasn't it? Never mind. Some people left town to go to India for a couple of weeks and.
No, this is something through the university and his, his teaching out there and, um, he had, was notified before this that we were going to bring it to council and we planned to act or see what the council wanted to do for action.
So if we take him back to court, his attorney could show up and represent him, he wouldn't be there if he's out of the country, is that correct?
Right, my.
I mean.
My belief is that the current magistrate would probably continue it until he's personally back is the problem. We don't have much, we don't have much teeth in what we've got over there right now. It's a, it's a nuisance, uh, and the fire marshal will back us on that as far as it being a safety hazard. But, um, I don't think the magistrate will act against him without.
I think setting the groundwork with the council, making a decision on what they wanna do will further that process once he gets back, that we'll, we'll know what our actions are, we'll know what we're planning on doing. And we could even inform him of what the council, you know, has chosen. Um, I think that we have some people in the community that can reach out to him and still have maybe some kind, a way to reach him. And that way, he can prepare what he wants to do when he gets back also.
And is he in violation of the property maintenance code as well?
It depends, um, it's under construction, so where do we say it's, construction's done? And this is the house that we have in the neighborhood, they're not living in it. Um, utilities aren't hooked up right now, but it's been five years. But he's been told no so many times and he's had, I believe he's had orders to cease and desist for a while um, because he just continues to do whatever he wants to.
Have we levied any fines or?
Um, Scott had not levied any fines. Uh, we tried to go through the lawyers and come up with a plan for him. Um, he does now have some cite, not citations, he has some notices about the trash and stuff like that right now. Um, we can start, once he gets back, we can start serving him notice, or citations on that stuff.
Well, I would say, why don't we take the position that, um, go ahead and pursue those and give them a deadline or the council will take legal action, like ninety days or something like that.
Uh, so those would be on, on the nuisances as far as the, the trash and stuff like that. But really, the, the problem is the house.
I, I'll make a motion to move forward at appropriate time.
Before and they last for eighteen months. But there isn't any building permit right now. He's being permitted to continue what he's doing by agreement that he has a plan and that he's doing the plan. The problem is that, uh, we take him back to court on that right now, it's like a contempt. Uh, except that's one of those things that you'd wanna have him personally present to explain himself about.
What was your motion, Tom?
Uh, I'll make a motion to move forward at the appropriate time.
Legally, with legal action?
Yes.
I second that.
So that's up to your discretion and when he's available.
Okay, so it's been moved by Two Hill, second by Flornoy to, um, move forward legally as we can. Okay.
Okay.
Um, any questions or discussion? Won't you go ahead and call the role on that, please?
Two Hill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, great, that was unanimously approved. Okay, um, nine oh one Wes Grimes is the next one.
Yes, uh, Your Honor, uh, this, this is a property that's abandoned. Weston and I have talked about both citation and six fifty-seven A. And the problem we have right now is it went through a divorce. And those things can really gum, gum up the works. There is an ex-spouse that doesn't want to, uh, relinquish a right, which would simplify everything. Uh, there's also a child support lien against it. Uh, I don't recall if there's a tax lien against it right now, but.
Somebody bought the taxes on it one year.
Yeah, so it's got multiple impediments on its title. If we go through six fifty-seven A, we might be able to, um, eliminate all those impediments. But the other side of it is, there's actually been somebody that wanted to buy it, uh, and fix it over and it seemed like a real deal, except no cooperation from the ex-spouse. Or we can't go anywhere with the ex-spouse, uh, and get rid of the other liens, uh, unless we have a plan where everybody cooperates. So, uh, my solution to that would be to sue them all, get them in court, have them understand that they could put this to an end in court by cooperating. But, uh, at this point, uh, one of the owners is where now?
Mr. Han Hong is in China, uh, and has no interest in really keeping the house. He would like to unload it without being penalized. Um, and this creates a lot of problems for us being able to send notices, um, and do the things that I would normally do to get their attention. He's, I've only communicated with him through email, um, and his, uh, realtor that he has here, she is backing off and they're not going to list the house anymore because they have not been able to sell it because of the liens and stuff that are due on it. And the problem is, if an investor buys it and then they fix it up to what our standards are, then there's a chance that, that somebody else could try and claim the house on them. Um, and I've talked to, um, they call him Han, Han, Han. Um, I, through the communications with him and the realtor, um, I believe that they would be willing to go along with the six fifty-seven A if the council would want to accept the house when it was done. Just to get rid of the nuisance for him and for us to be able to wipe that debt out. And, um, be able to hopefully sell the house when we're done.
If we do the six fifty-eight, seven A, what happens to the liens?
Well, there is a way to extinguish the lien under part ten of the six fifty-seven A. The problem is, we have a six fifty-seven A right now that we're rescheduling in district court because I told you about it at the last council meeting, the, the owner of the house counterclaimed for a hundred thousand dollars plus fifty-eight thousand dollars worth of interest, he says we cost him. So we got a counterclaim of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars on a house that isn't worth ten thousand dollars.
That's a little different.
Yeah.
Circumstance because we had a.
Yeah.
Account that was being held, that he felt like he was not.
Both the ex-wife and the, uh, child support recovery units might have, uh, counterclaims against us. So it can blow up in our face. I think, uh, the state would probably cooperate with us. I have no belief that the ex-wife will cooperate with us.
When's the last time taxes have been paid?
It sold at tax sale last year.
That, that's what I was gonna ask, how does six fifty-seven A procedures work with somebody who has purchased the property at tax sale or has an interest in the property?
They get their money back.
They get their money back.
Yeah. And that's not popular with the counties because the counties have to give the money back.
How much, you know, the value of the liens are?
Uh, it's only eighteen hundred bucks right now, the tax sale lien.
That's just the tax. My belief is that the child support recovery lien is, uh, probably, uh, multiple years, uh, ten to twenty thousand dollars.
For some reason, I think the number is around forty.
That'd be the liability we would, if we took the property, we'd have that liability maybe.
I haven't communicated with Assistant Attorney General that works in that area here yet, but we may be hearing from them instead of me communicating with them.
We're a little early in the process for what we'd normally push for the six fifty-seven A. But with the owner trying to sell it and not being able to and being willing to forfeit it or get rid of it at any way he can, that's where I'm asking council is, would you be willing to if he is, wants to move along with the six fifty-seven A? So we can work with the other debtors that, or the other, who have that on it?
Okay, council, what do you wanna do?
Seems like a good option to me.
What's, what's?
I move for, I, uh, I guess I make a motion that we move forward with the six fifty-seven A.
Second.
Okay, been moving second and to move with six fifty-seven A, any discussion?
So if we do get the house, we also get the lien? That's what I'm worried about.
We asked the district court to extinguish the lien.
I know, but he may or may not do it.
We, yeah, that's, that's correct, yes. They may not do it, but the court has the power to do it. So it's a matter of, I guess, who lawyers up, whether they fight it, the child support recovery unit, if it's a big enough amount of money. And they think that there's some money. Weston believes they've had an offer, sort of scogman of what?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand dollars. That's enough to pay some on the child support lien.
Yeah, I was gonna say, could they settle for a smaller amount?
Negotiate with an Assistant Attorney General about that. I just really do not believe we can negotiate with the ex-spouse. Uh, and I don't know the extent of her interest in this from a divorce settlement. That's something usually you talk over with.
She's the money that the child support.
Yeah.
She's the person the money, the child support money's owed to? Same person?
And we don't have access to whether she has an ADC account or not until we get into it with the Attorney General's office, so.
That's where starting the six fifty-seven A process gets us all that information.
I guess I don't feel comfortable, uh, extinguishing a child support lien.
All right.
Like that.
That's, that was, we'll try to do that.
Can we back out of the six fifty-seven A at any process?
You can dismiss it anytime, uh, depends on if there's something else pending. If, if there's a counterclaim pending, the other side doesn't have to end the suit and we'd be sitting there with a potential default if we back out, so we don't wanna do that.
Is there a way we could get more information before we pursue the six fifty-seven A?
Yeah, I expect that we'll probably get the names of some lawyers off the divorce papers and stuff like that. Abstract company will go further and we'll have that, but it's, at this point, Weston's characterizing it correctly. We, we're preliminary going into this and we're just trying to figure out a way to fix it.
Before we would file, it would always come to council first to vote on whether to actually file the six fifty, just like the other properties that we've talked about so far. And doing that, um, we do have a couple of those that are moving into new ha, new hands also, just so you know. Uh, some of those properties are getting new owners because of the push that we put on to them. So that's what we're hoping for here, is that either she decides that she'll take a settlement and they can sell the house themselves or if he, if it goes down that road, that we can get it extinguished and we don't have to pay the, pay it and we can get the house moving.
So I'm just trying to be clear with the city attorney, or from the city attorney, are we at risk if we take possession of the property of being on the hook for these liens or any portion of them?
We can be. I wouldn't, I wouldn't take possession and record it, Paul, until we had the district court rule under section ten about whether those liens are extinguished.
Are we in a position where we'd be able to, if we knew, if we saw it coming, that we might be on the hook?
We haven't, we haven't filed the suit yet.
I understand.
If the suit drives, if the suit drives the ex-wife, uh, and the tax certificate purchaser.
If the suit were filed, we'd be able to dismiss it out and not be on the, possibly at risk we're being responsible for these liens?
Yeah, at the beginning.
Yes?
Yeah.
At the beginning, if there wasn't a counterclaim.
Right.
So we, we are, if we file a suit, I think, if I'm understanding correctly, file a suit, we could be liable for some portion of the liens, the city, is that right?
Well, what happens is if, if the child support recovery unit, they have a Assistant Attorney General in Otomo and they have one in Des Moines that are focused on us. If they say, well, you know, we got forty thousand dollars in the, uh, bag right now that we. If they say, well, you know, we got forty thousand dollars in the bag right now that we intend to collect. If you get twenty-five thousand dollars out of the house on your wheeling and dealing, we expect all of that and we're not giving up our lien until we see if that's all there is.
So is the answer yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
The answer is yes.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second.
Well, I'm, I'm a little concerned here.
Do you want to, yeah, and I hear the concern. My question is, do you want to take it to a vote or you wanna discuss more or withdraw the motion?
We're not even filing the suit yet. That would come before council again.
Correct.
This is kind of just like preliminary negotiation to potentially get...
We're gonna spend some money probably doing some background investigating.
There'll be some more abstract company where...
So this is a motion to...
The motion was to go to six fifty seven A.
Yeah.
But not file us, not...
Right, the preliminary stuff to do the six fifty seven A is some questions. The abstract company answers for us.
We'll have another opportunity to decide whether or not we would go to file suit.
We'll have a suit drafted and a resolution authorizing the filing when we get to that point.
And if I heard you correctly, you suggested that we wouldn't take possession if it had liens on it. But we could refuse possession if it had liens on it.
At the end of that process, you get something from the district court called change of title. And it's pursuant to six fifty seven A. And that's after we've answered all the questions. If we don't have the court go that far or we see that there's some hurdles that are just gonna mess us up, I'll be telling you.
The six fifty seven A process, this is what it, a lot of it's designed for though, is to... Okay, I'm comfortable supporting the motion on the basis that we're not, the city is not at risk of surprise, be, being surprised and assuming liens. We're just taking steps in that direction, which could lead to that, but we're not to that point yet. Correct.
Don, I've got a deal for you.
I tried to get him to buy it.
Yeah, listen close, Don, this is a good one.
I'm known lien.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Okay, let's, let's roll call. Roe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay, that was unanimous to go down the six fifty seven A road.
Okay.
Start.
Thank you for listening to us. The other thing that's on the list here is a request tax sale ordinance from Jefferson County. That's probably another preliminary thing. What we want to do basically, and I'm looking at Liz real close there, is have a meeting with the county attorney and at least one of the members of board of supervisors to talk about something that they can put into ordinance at the county side that's sort of an enabling ordinance. And when we want to do something where there's a property that somebody's dealing in the tax sale and we'd like to take it and deal with it as a nuisance, we can have an enabling ordinance with the county board of supervisors where basically we can, I'm just gonna say, we can collaborate with the board of supervisors to have it bid in for the taxes and to do a taking that way. Three sixty-four, is it twelve or?
I was just looking for that. There's three different state, state tax ordinances or codes that we can use. And there's three different basically ways that it would help the city. One would be that we would set up a special sale for people that are investors in the community that have a plan to refurbish the houses. And they would be the only ones that'd be allowed to bid on the property taxes at that point. Another solution or another way is to have it so the city can basically get the taxes or get the property through the tax sale. I believe that way the county would just wipe out the taxes, if I understand that right, John?
We've used that one time in the past with the city a long time ago when we had a brownfield project over at the old Iowa malleable site. And there were tens of thousands of dollars worth of real estate taxes pending at the time. The board of supervisors agreed, subject to a partnering agreement between FIDA and the city and the county, that we would promise that if they let us take the malleable site and re-deal it in a brownfield plan and not make any profit off of it, basically turn it into next industrial sites, that they would take the tax sale properties and turn them over to us. That was very effective as getting rid of about two million dollars worth of liens at banks and a whole bunch of supplier liens from judgments. This isn't, you know, this is all imagined at this point as far as what we'd be asking the board in a given situation. But if they have an enabling ordinance, it would let us have that conversation case by case. So, you know, it's the simplest way I can explain it. But it is something counties have the discretion to say, well, nah, we don't want to do that. Or they can, you know, be on board about this and be part of the solution for our in-town nuisances.
So are we asking this to go to one of the committees and then have a joint meeting?
Yeah, I don't know if anybody on the council wants to be part of a meeting we have maybe with the... Yeah, I would start out with a supervisor and the county attorney's office screening it.
What we're looking for is a support from the council and guidance as to who would want to be involved in this process as far as asking the county supervisors and presenting this to them. Whether you want it to be me or you want it to be John or whoever that is or Doug.
Or and or, yeah. I was gonna say, I can amuck the development chair or...
If you want to read up on this or property, we had a work session on nuisances with a handbook that went out to you. And it was one of about eight different alternative ways of dealing with nuisances. And it's, it is just called in the handbook, the tax sale alternative. And that's what we're talking about. So if you want to, you know, look at your, your old loose leaf on that, it'll help you.
I have, I have all of them printed off also that I can give to any council member.
So maybe we circulate that to the council. And if you want to either have a committee talk about it or if you want to have somebody designated for council to be part of the discussion. But I envision Weston being part of the discussion, myself, maybe Liz and Chauncey. And I don't know who from the board of supervisors. But it'll take a group and it'll take good understanding for everybody to be on board about it.
You want to be part of that, Doug?
Sure.
And then come back to the council if they needed to make some action?
Absolutely.
Is that acceptable, council?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great.
All right.
Okay.
Other than that, Your Honor, I had, I had planned on talking about maybe another twenty minutes about the letter in the editor in the newspaper, the four column letter about no performance evaluation in the last sixty-three years. Now, that's not quite what I agree with, but we have, every two years we have reappointments and they're a form of evaluation all by themselves. But I have given this a lot of thought because I've also designed performance evaluations for three smaller towns, including two of them that we did the forms for, the questionnaire for the evaluation. And I'm not opposed to an evaluation, except I think it needs to be maybe hybridized. And there's a part of it that can't probably be reached by most of the council. And that's the professional evaluation side, which Paul would be qualified as far as knowing about codes of conduct, things that we supply each year to the courts and administrative bodies and stuff about our qualifications to do things. And some of it has to do with other groups that we work with regularly, like USDA. If I do eighty title opinions for eighty title packets for step two, they have to like me. So they've approved that over the years because I've been in all the projects with the government for the whole past period. So that's another form of evaluation. But realistically, the rest of the evaluations usually go to things like, you know, quality of work. Does he get his work done when it's needed? Things that I do in dealing with the public, communication skills, whether I'm a polite person, et cetera, and that kind of stuff. Which we actually have that same scenario in our employee manual for the city. And some of those things, I certainly, I can learn from anybody's opinion about me. So what I'm gonna suggest is, I'll bring you back some of those forms of personnel evaluation and we'll circulate it among you. And you can all turn it into the administrator and the mayor and then decide what you want to do about it, if you want to go to committee or not. But I, I see a value in that myself. Nobody's perfect as far as what you have, as far as longevity and so forth. Nobody's as old as I am, so I got one star that way already. As far as the evaluation process, I probably was a little bit terse the last time as far as saying, I'm not sure that that's something to do here. But I'm also thinking right now that maybe it is something that it wouldn't hurt to have that on the, on the personal side, that kind of evaluation. And then if, if you can think of a way to have a professional evaluation, I'm at a point right now where I'm about as licenseded as I can get as far as associations and types of certificates and things like that. I don't think I need any more of those. But that's my two cents worth on that. Instead of twenty minutes, it was only four or five. Anyway, so I'll get you back a questionnaire and you can react to that. But I'll make sure you all get an email about it.
Allow me to fill in the gap with the twenty minutes if you don't mind? Just a comment, I wasn't, I think the idea of evaluation of all our vendors is, makes sense, including our, anyone we contract with. The question, what my concern was the timing. We entered into a contract with the attorney last summer. So probably if we're going to do an evaluation, that would have been the time. We already had a contract to evaluate. Now is probably a little bit late. Now, my opinion, going forward, the personnel committee, obviously, the council would make the decision when and how we evaluate our vendors. So that's, from my point of view, it's going to be the council. We appreciate definitely your suggestions, John, and your ideas. But ultimately, it's the council that's going to make the decision when and how to evaluate our vendors. And I suspect the best time would be at the, probably when we, I think our contract's on an annual basis with our attorney. And at that point, if we choose to do an evaluation, then we do an evaluation. And how we structure it will certainly take into account your ideas.
Yeah, it's actually every two-year terms.
But, okay, your contract is for two years?
Yeah.
Your contract is for two years?
Yeah.
I don't remember, okay. So in any case, the council at that time, I think that's probably the appropriate time, although we could do it annually, we undertake the evaluation. So I, I think the idea of evaluation is good. The timing, I think that's my, my hesitancy last week had to do with timing and the sort of, the sort of didn't know it was coming aspect of it. But knowing now that we've talked about it, it's something that's certainly worth considering. My opinion, when the time is right, was, will be towards the looking at, look towards renewing the contract.
Okay. One thing, I've got a list of several things that we could possibly have a work session in. I'm looking at April timeframe. So we could maybe look at a timeframe there if you want to, or something like that too.
I mean, Don has been a loyal public servant for decades. And so we want to give them all the respect you're due, which is quite a bit. And also, we want to do our best for the city and our citizens to make sure they get the best service they deserve, which is...
I'm just gonna say, I, I have full faith in the council that's been here for sixty-plus years that if they were unhappy with the city attorney, they would have let them know. So, anyway, okay, so let's move on. Committee and board reports, public safety and transportation.
Am I reporting on that?
Apparently.
Okay.
Just Judy's not here.
So...
Do you mind?
Before council, we are, again, in alignment with reviewing contracts. We have the airport contract and the FBO, the management agreement and the FBO for the extension of the contract and the current management facility of, of the airport. We did not put it, it has already gone through the airport committee for review. They've recommended that it move forward. However, there, I believe that the committee needs to review that, whichever committee that would be, the Ways and Means or whether it be personnel, 'cause it's kind of both. But right before the budget season and this contract is in there, I would stand or sit for recommendations of whether it needs to be moved forward or not.
I think we ought to, well, that's my personal opinion, put it to Ways and Means since it's, we have money attached to it and all, but what do y'all think?
What do you think, Mr. Toohill, chair of the Ways and Means Committee?
Personally, I think it should go through Ways and Means.
Okay.
I make that motion?
I think any contracted employee should go through Ways and Means because it's a funding issue and it's a, it's a contractual financial issue, more so than a personnel issue.
I think that there can be instances where it's appropriate. If the funding issue is not in question, it could be instances where it's appropriate to be reviewed by personnel. But in this case, right, if we're dealing with evaluation, it's, it's not just about money.
It's still the contract.
Yes, but it's not just, yes, it is, it is. So this is a philosophical discussion we're having. But anyway, I, I do make the motion to refer to Ways and Means.
Okay, it's been moved to refer to Ways and Means. Second, second by Caness, any discussion? Not, please call the rule. Gandy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Question for Doug. Was the recommendation of the airport commission that it extend on the same terms or do you know?
It extends on the same term. Essentially, it looks just like the previous contract. I think it's for an additional three years.
Yeah, I have seven years left. I just asked for extension of three more years to the airport board.
So that...
So we've got one that's not expiring, it's just being extended.
It's just, I just asked for extension.
Okay, so he's asked for extension, so, it's great. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll warm up again. What else?
Do you have anything else for public safety?
I do not.
Okay.
Was there anything?
Did we discuss public safety?
No.
We kind of went to airport committee.
Yeah. There's a management agreement and the FBO. The management agreement is separate.
Judy's chair of the public safety committee.
She's chair, and there were no recommendations to council that we discussed. It was just an overview, an update.
Do you have any, any report you want to give us or?
The minutes are very thorough.
I was gonna say, the minutes are there. Because I can't have any questions about the minutes. Let's move on, okay.
Don't worry about it.
And then economic development, we've pretty much discussed.
But...
Don't we do the management contract?
A lot of that, but do you want us to...
There is one element, yes, we did discuss.
Management contract.
There were two items on the agenda for, I'll wait till they finish talking.
Do we do this one?
Yes.
We move up them in one, sorry.
One move?
No, no.
Go ahead.
Guys, ready?
Yes.
Okay, so the Economic Development Committee had two items on this agenda for discussion. One, we reviewed this evening, which had to do with the proposal for the agreement with, with FIDA. The second had to do, and this is brought to us by Terry Caness, a new member of the council and member of the Economic Development Committee. You've probably heard that the city is interested in downtown revitalization. We're proposing perhaps a task force of some, of some type. And there are people very interested in that. Of course, FIDA would be a key player. So, but Terry was, was, is, is engaged and brought to the committee's attention for discussion. We don't have any, we don't have a proposal for the council, but brought to our attention for discussion, the Community Development Block Grant. It's called the CDBG, Downtown Revitalization Funding Opportunity. So I'd just like for her briefly, I've asked her, so she's not surprised, to speak about the CDBG opportunity.
Yeah, the opportunity is for up to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in CDBG grant dollars. It can be used on, it's, it's, the scope is a little bit bigger, I think, than the last downtown revitalization one. It just opened up February first. I think the deadline to apply is March thirty-first. And Ed had indicated that they had a meeting already set up with the, with the developers of the, the grant at the Iowa Economic Development level to discuss applying for that. So I just offered to him, any help that he needs from us in doing that? Because I think the city typically administers the CDBG.
Probably requires a match. So is it fifty fifty match?
It didn't say anything about a match.
No, there is a match.
Is there? Is there?
There's almost always a match with grants.
I think that's one thing that has to be flushed out, even see if it's possible.
The last one we did was a hundred thousand dollars, our side, for the facades of some of the businesses downtown. That was some years ago.
The owners ended up with thirty to forty percent contribution and the rest of it was from the grant, except for our contribution.
That's pretty good for the owners. It's a good deal.
We had about four or five people back out on the contribution.
Right.
But we still had.
Do we put that on their property taxes?
Fifteen, pardon?
Did we put that on their property taxes?
I don't think we did.
But we had like fifteen people who went ahead, or owners, fifteen or so? Yeah, that's good. That's a good deal.
Yeah, it does say local matching funds are required. But I just thought it would be a good opportunity to pursue and I think we have the required eight, five buildings likely.
Always good to talk about and understand what those grant opportunities are and see if they fit in, in timing wise. And that Main Street program, just to, they also have a March thirty-first deadline with intent to apply. So, you know, we'll talk about that, too. But that, you know, it requires another apparently board and all that jazz and funding source. So I don't know if we can go down that road or not, but it's, you know, we'll look at it. Okay, anything else, Paul?
No, that's it.
No, that's it. So administrator report.
I'll be brief. I, it's been a long night and a long day. It's since we've last met, actually had the opportunity to meet with the resilience action committee twice. The second one was via Zoom. It was, and I was pleased that, that I actually got to do it that way and I could stay here, keep my hands on the steering wheel because of the budget and just, meeting after meeting after meeting. But I really like to attend these meetings in person. And they've got a, a lot of interested people, a lot of people that are participating in a half a dozen, a dozen initiatives. And they're right now looking at the landfill. I haven't been out to the landfill since I've started work. I would like to see that, but they're talking about greenhouse gases and all sorts of things. So as Faith will eventually give us an annual report and see where we're going. But there's a lot of moving parts in what she's doing and I appreciate it and I appreciate the invitation and hopefully we'll keep that moving forward. Wanted to talk about a few policy changes that will be coming in the next several months. Again, we kinda took our hands off of those levers and started working on numbers and where we headed. But there are some policies that we will need to be talking about. But specifically procurement is a cost-saving measure. In our procurement policies, we do not actually say that we can buy used equipment, but I think it's a good practice. We prefer to buy new equipment because we have more reliability. We keep them way past their useful life normally. When it's time to get rid of city equipment, it's probably not even safe to own and it's used for parts. But when we're, we have a compressed budget and we need equipment, sometimes I think it would be good practice that if we look at a four or five-year-old piece of equipment that we might use for two decades, but typically we're using it for three decades. So there's gonna be some of those policies that'll be coming your way so we can get that on the book, books, and we'll move forward with it however the council may choose. You might also notice opening up the transparency and ease of the things that we do. I've asked Jason to add a hyperlink to these council meetings actually on our agendas so they don't have to search for it. Hopefully, we'll have more of these things coming. But I want to make everything that we do easily accessible to the public so that they can keep eyes on us and how we're doing things. And hopefully that will get more people here or more people watching. And this is just one of the easy, inexpensive things that we could do to make it happen. Lastly, again, we have Ways and Means Committee tomorrow at one thirty. It's open to the public. But this will be the first review. I apologize for the miscommunication when we were putting out budget books. I am not familiar with our, our city policy where the, the budget books go to Ways and Means first and not the entire council. But we do have budget books, the binders, on order to have budget books sent out to the entire council this week. Is that correct? I'm looking at.
The books are supposed to be here Thursday.
Thursday. So hopefully by this Friday, we'll have, the rest of the council will be able to lay eyes. But I would encourage them to come to the Ways and Means Committee and we'll tweak that process as time goes on. I hope what you've seen so far you appreciate. And we'll move forward from here, but it's all budget all the time. That's what we're doing.
You wanna mention the, some of the upgrades at the pool, what's happening with some of those things?
So.
What we had with Calvin and Jody, just touch on some of those highlights?
Yeah, I can talk about that. So there have been complaints in regards to the rec center when it comes to the doors, when it comes to the cleanliness, when it comes to the pool deck. And me looking at the pictures and understanding facilities maintenance, what's wrong with the rec center is not necessarily a cleanliness problem. It's a maintenance issue and it's an expensive maintenance issues. We had the discussion that the two doors that need to be replaced is sixteen thousand dollars because there's a lot of corrosion. We need corrosion-resistant doors. It's not just something that, you know, they're commercial and all sorts of parts that go into it. Another sixty thousand dollars that we have estimated that will cost to repair the pool deck. And all of those things are in the budget and that we're working on those things now. So, but that process takes time. And so it's really important that, that people understand that, yes, we're actually getting quotes for cleaning contracts and what that may look like. Not as high as I thought, but still significantly higher. And those are the discussions that we'll have in future weeks with the Ways and Means and the council of what they like and what they don't like and how we can afford those things. But yeah, when we have a facility like that, we have to understand that there's perpetual care that goes with these things. And sometimes they're really expensive and again, having the conversation at six o'clock today is one of those things that we may have to, you know, bond for some of those things and we can do that. So, is that helpful?
Yeah, so I just wanna mention that the, the pool deck, the doors, we know we still have an issue with the flooring in the locker rooms. And, you know, we have been working with the company and it's taken a while to do all the things that they said to do, right? Because, you know, they, there's a warranty on that, yes, but it's not as easy of we don't like it and we just wanna rip it up and we want our money back. It's a great idea. I, I would like to do that 'cause nobody's really happy with it. I guess there's a few people happy, happy with it 'cause it's not slick. And so they feel safe walking on it with wet feet and such. But all that is, has just been a long, slow process. And it, it appears, based on what, what Calvin and Jody communicated, that a lot of these things that people are unhappy about should be resolved in the next, you know, fifteen, sixteen months in this next fiscal year. So that's our hope. And so appreciate patience on that. And so I guess if anybody wants to do it faster, they gotta go out and fundraise for it and then give Calvin the money. So.
I, I do wanna point out really quick, too, about the budget. I just wanna thank Rebecca and Melanie and Doug for all the extra hours they put in, putting this thing together so far.
Yes, absolutely.
Looks great.
I could actually say that they did more work than I did. They, they amazed me. So answering my ridiculous questions of what does this mean and why is this there? So Melanie is the master of spreadsheets. So she took what I had and just, wait till you see tomorrow. It's amazing.
She moved it up a level, too. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, she did.
Way to go, Mel. Way to go, Rebecca. Melanie, do you have anything then? Nothing? Okay. Nothing? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Toohill. Second by Caness. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those above the same sign. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and we are only a few minutes late past nine.
Okay.
Yay!